Good morning and welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM, Monday, December 17th, 2012. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before I ask for an acceptance of the agenda, I'd like to make note that we will be tabling items 14 and 15 on the agenda today. And with that change being made, I will ask for an acceptance of the agenda. Motion by Mr. Holmes and second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The first item this morning is a proclamation, and this is in recognition of Bennett International Group LLC being named the 2012 Georgia Family Business of the Year. And we are so fortunate to have this company located in Henry County. Whereas the McDonough-based Bennett International Group LLC was founded in 1974 in Henry County when CEO Marcy Taylor and her late husband JD Garrison acquired George Bennett Truck Lines. And under her leadership, Bennett has grown to employ 638 people across the United States and currently ranks as one of the nation's top woman-owned companies. And whereas Bennett is a diversified transportation and logistics service provider with seven operating lines, including trucking and specialized freight transport warehousing and distribution, international freight forwarding, driveway vehicle transport, manufactured housing transport, third-party logistics, and portable building manufacturing. And whereas Bennett has received many awards and accolades over the years, and most recently named a Gold Fit Friendly Company by the American Heart Association, a Top 100 Workplace in Atlanta by the Atlanta Journal Constitution, and the 2012 National Transportation Award winner by the National Defense Transportation Association. Whereas on November 14th, 2012, Bennett International Group LLC was also awarded the 2012 Georgia Family Business of the Year by the Cox Family Enterprise Center, which honors the best Georgia family businesses based on family involvement in the business, innovative business practices or strategies, contributions to the community and business success. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners offers its heartfelt congratulations to Bennett International for its outstanding success and its sincerest appreciation for Bennett's contributions to Henry County's economy and involvement in making the county a better place to live and work, and wishes them continued success and prosperity this 17th day of December, 2012. And I know Marcy Taylor is here this morning, and as well as some of her family members. And Marcy, would you like to step to the front and say a few words before we present this presentation to you?
Well, thank you. It was a great honor for us to be here this morning. We were really excited to receive the Georgia Family Business of the Year award, mostly because Bennett is, you know, it's a family company. A lot of our immediate family work there, but then also, we have a lot of folks that's been with us for many, many years that are family members. And so it was, it was a great honor and a great award. And so we're very thankful to y'all for recognizing us today, and just very thankful for that.
We appreciate all that you provide to the community, and a lot of people probably don't realize how actively involved you are with Piedmont Henry Hospital, and when it was just Henry Medical Center, and very gracious to assist with local charities. And we're very, very, very thankful that you're here in Henry County.
Marcy has, sits down, and so I've had the privilege of knowing the Bennett family for well over 20 years now. She's also been a neighbor man in my neighborhood. Their outreach goes a lot farther than the proclamation could ever bring about. Their company is, when my wife and myself, when we started our business, I think Bank South was our, our bank then, and we were on the same, with the same bank. Marcy, that's really the first time that I've met her, because you were given the Woman Owned Business of the Year that year, I think it was 93 or 94, or something along those lines. But their outreach and their generosity far outreaches what we've been able to put in that proclamation. And I just wanted to make the comment, I, I know David, and I know, I mean, I know her family, and they're just really good people, and I just wanted to make that comment this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. And Marcy, if you would step over here, we'd like to present the proclamation.
All right, at this time, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a presentation to the Atlanta Motor Speedway Children's Charity, and I'm going to turn this over to Commissioners Stamey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This award is always brings me great, great pleasure to be a part of every year, and this organization is first class. And Ginger, I'm going to invite you and Rhonda to come up to do this presentation. But before we, before I do, I'd like to add a comment, and I see Stacey and Steve out there too. But this individual that always, that wins this, when, this particular year, always brought us great pleasure when they come in, because when we got there early on Monday mornings at 6:30 or so, we always looked forward to seeing that caravan of people that you brought with you. So it was always very satisfying to know that we had a lot of help coming, because when you came, you always brought a whole bunch of people, a good pack of people with you. But if you would, Ginger, step up, you and Rhonda step up to the podium, and I'll let y'all hand over the presentation.
Thank you so much for allowing us to be here today, and it's such an honor. Speedway Children's Charities, the Buster Dickerson Award is an award in his honor because he gave so much to Speedway Children's Charities. He was a dedicated board member, but more than that, he had a passion for making a difference for children here in Henry County. And through that, a statement of his life that became quite common at the Speedway was, "It is what it is." And every year now, this is the...
Fourth year?
Third year that we present this award. And this year, it does go to an individual and a family of a company, because this individual, as Randy says, not only brings herself, but brings a, at least 25 to 50 volunteers with her to assist in our hot laps on Monday morning after we've already been at the race doing event four days in a row. So as Randy said, when we get there, it's such a pleasure to see refreshed faces and just a new, you know, we, it gives us an extra fresh breath that we can breathe, knowing that these volunteers want to be there and want to give their time and also make a difference. So in that, we also have Ms. Ellen Dickerson here with us today, Buster's wife. And this presentation is being made to Holly Campbell, and it's, like I said, not just to Holly, but her family at a southern company in Georgia Power. They're so dedicated to us, and we appreciate them so much. For all you did for life, thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Holly, you want to add anything before we take a picture?
Yes, I would love to. It's a, it's a tremendous honor, and you know, this room today is full of people who dedicate their lives to the community and to charities like the Atlanta Motor Speedway. And the true tribute is to the Dickerson family. Would you please stand up? This is Buster's family, can you hear me?
Yes.
And Ellen and Craig, and the, the true tribute is to him, and it's an honor for me to follow in his legacy and the work of the Atlanta Motor Speedway. I have to tell you that I have tremendous support from Georgia Power and from the community at Lakes Bobby, so I want to give honor to them too. Thank you.
We can get the Dickerson family to come on up, and y'all come up, and we'll take a picture with, with the other board members.
So another great asset to our county is Atlanta Motor Speedway and certainly Speedway Children's Charity. They do so much for, for many of the charities within our community, and we're very thankful for their contribution and all that they do to help our citizens. The next item on the agenda is under purchasing. We have a resolution requesting award of a bid for fire protection system services. Our presenter is Rod Gray, Director of Purchasing, and that's exhibit number one. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you. This is, this is sealed bid 1316, which is fire protection system services, and it is an annual contract. The request is to approve this contract for fire protection services for the facilities for scheduled inspections, preventive maintenance, and repair of all applicable systems. The original term of this contract is for one year, beginning on January 1st, 2012, and ending on December 31st, 2013. By mutual agreement between Henry County and the vendor, the contract to be extended for an additional two years, not to exceed an intermination date of December 31st, 2015. The recommendation is to award this contract to Fire and Life Safety America of Norcross with the lowest overall bid. Funding for these services is available in the facilities, maintenance, and other departmental budgets.
Any board member have a question or comment? If not, you have before you a resolution awarding the bid to Fire and Life Safety America of Norcross, Georgia, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Stamey, a second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is under SPOST. We have a resolution requesting authorization to reallocate SPOST funds to the Campground Road Extension Project. Our presenter is Rocky Romero, SPOST Transportation Director, exhibit number two. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and board members. Rock Quarry Road is a designated SPOST III Transportation Project under construction with a current balance of $4,183,071.35. Campground Road Extension is designated as well as SPOST III Transportation Project in roadway acquisition, which will require additional funding to complete construction once we get to that stage. SPOST is requesting a reallocation of 1.5 million from Rock Quarry Road project budget to Campground Road Extension project budget to assist with the construction and related costs.
Does any board member have a question? Mr. Bowman?
I'm at, it's, we had, we had Campground Road in there all along, and we had, that was in District 3 at the time, and we had, working with Commissioner Stamey to put a million dollars in. That's where the shortfall was. Shortfall has been increased a little, and there was enough money left in Rock Quarry because we're not going to be able to do all of Rock Quarry to bring the Campground Road up. I just didn't want the public to think that we were sitting here, we just had an extra million and a half that we could throw around. It was always, it was on the list, and it was on the list as a District 3 project that District 4 was helping with, because it's actually District 4 now. But it was on the list if Mr. Stamey would like to add anything to that, but that's, that's the reason for this, this movement.
This has always been a District 3 project, and when we were allowed to get some of that $22 million came back from the federal government for the road on Eagle's Landing, it allowed us to put money back into Campground Road Extension. And Reed, at that time, had promised me a million dollars. I could have sworn Mr. Holdergate was going to give me a million too, but I wasn't positive on that one. But this, this project actually is in 3, and as you stated earlier, we'll move to 4. Hopefully, we can, we won't, it was our goal to get it started in 13, 12, but it'll definitely start in 13.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Holder, did you want to comment? On your lack of generosity?
On my lack of generosity, yeah. But I would think we need to start this today, though, because in, in, in reminding people that Districts 3, 4, and 5 got 22 million, 18 million dollars more than whatever, than whatever two, Districts 1 and 2. So, but anyhow, I will make that comment, and if you'd like to investigate further, please call me, I can give you the true story of the thing.
I'm just simply getting back what I participated in the road project, correct, Rocky?
Correct. Thank you.
That's correct. Just others almost didn't have that opportunity to participate, but go ahead, sir.
It's not too bad to participate on the other one.
There have been contributions from other districts to have on other projects for District 1. I'll just slide back and not say anymore about that at this particular time, but it's not always, it's, we've helped each other.
We have.
We have helped each other, and I remember this board, I, I, this, I have to make this, this point, Millers Mill Road and 138, the DOT, Georgia DOT, at first, and I'm going to use approximate numbers, because I don't have them up here, we weren't going to talk about that, but anyway, it was approximately a couple hundred thousand dollars we were going to have to put in. Then it went to $400,000 we were going to have to put in. Then it went to an over, it was a million dollars. And, and without the help of the other districts in this board, that unsafe turnout at Millers Mill Road and 138 would be exactly where it was. And there again, it was the help of this board enabling me to be able to get that done, because we'd had several fatalities right there. So anyway, I did want to bring that up, that's, boards work together on a lot of projects, and that was one of them, and I was more than happy to help with some of the other ones in some of the other districts, so.
All right, you have before you a resolution for the reallocation of SPOST III funds for the Rock Quarry Road to the Campground Road Extension, and I will look for a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Have a motion by Mr. Bowman, a second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Moving on to Technology Services. We have a resolution requesting renewal of a contract for professional services with Gartner Incorporated. Our presenter is Clark Rayner, Director of Technology Services, exhibit number three. Good morning.
Good morning. Again, this is just to repeat what you said. This is a renewal of a contract that we started last year with Gartner Incorporated. Gartner is the leading consulting firm for IT services that exist that, that's out there, and they've been helping us with RFP development, contract review, and also RFP proposal reviews as well. We're currently in the middle of some of the largest ones that we've ever undertaken in our department. One is for ERP software, which is all of our back office financials, purchasing, inventory, asset management, all of the big things that really are the foundation for everything that goes on in the government. And we currently have a team of analysts that have been working with us on those, on those projects. The, the contract is actually up December 20th, and if we have to delay this, we're afraid that we're going to lose the team of analysts that we're currently working with and want to be able to continue that forward. We happy to take any questions.
Any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution awarding a contract for professional services to Gartner Incorporated, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item is under Planning and Zoning Services. A presentation of the proposed Bear Creek Opportunity Zone application. Our presenter is Michael Harris, Planning and Zoning Services Division Director, and that's exhibit number four. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, board members. Back in April of this year, staff brought before the board the proposed redevelopment plan for the area in Henry County, particularly in District 2 around the Hampton area. At that time, the staff, the board, rather, unanimously adopted that redevelopment plan. And the next step, the whole purpose of adopting a redevelopment plan was to move forward with a Opportunity Zone application. We're at the point now where we're preparing to submit the, the first of what we hope to be several Opportunity Zone applications throughout Henry County, and just kind of wanted to come back and, once again, kind of explain what we've done so far to date, the work that's gone into preparing this application, and our next steps in the process. So I have just a brief presentation. Mr. Bob White, our Development Authority representative, he's also here to answer any questions that you may have, so I'm just going to run through this real quick. The whole purpose of the opportunity, of creating Opportunity Zones is to, again, is to benefit businesses and allow for job tax credits. These credits offset the Georgia income tax as well as the withholding tax. Opportunity, criteria for an Opportunity Zone is an area within or adjacent to a census block tract with a poverty rate of 15% or greater. In this case, the Hampton area was actually at 20%, which was one of our higher areas within the county. We have two other areas, one near the McDonough area, and another one near the Stockbridge area as well. Within a state enterprise, it must be located either within a state enterprise zone or within a redevelopment plan. And again, in this case, we adopted the redevelopment plan, so we meet that criteria by having had already adopted our redevelopment plan. The area must display pervasive poverty, underdevelopment, general distress, and blight. And that's a, you know, staff, myself, Bert Foster with our building departments, some of his staff, and Pat Delk's been doing a tremendous job on creating a lot of the mapping and doing a lot of the parcel identification work that's been required of actually identifying each individual parcel within a selected area and making determination on pervasive poverty and the like. And these are the types of, this is not in Henry County, this is just a sample, sample picture, but give you an idea of the type of location that we'd be looking for within those areas. But this is, again, a perfect example of the type of redevelopment we've been proposing to, to achieve through this process. The benefits to the community, most primarily is job creation. Come on. The specifics of the opportunity job, job tax credit are any lawful business, including retail, and that's one caveat that typically isn't exist with other tax credits. Actually, retail is included within this, within this application process, so that is eligible for the reimbursements. Job creation threshold, minimum of two. It can be two net new jobs with the only criteria being that they cannot be husband and wife, but anything beyond that. So any existing business, what I think is also a key point to make, it can be an existing business that creates two new jobs, or any new business that comes in with at least two new, new jobs. And that credit, the value of that credit is $3,500 per net new job, which may be claimed for five years, as long as the job is maintained. And gives a calculation of how that's actually, how it's calculated. Business creates two net new jobs, the business maintains those jobs for five years, which, which equates to a total possible credit of $35,000 for two jobs. Again, so from that standpoint, you can see the incentive that this creates for incentivizing the area and, and bringing new businesses into a respective area. So again, that was, again, as we've talked about, and as Bob has also stressed, again, another tool for the toolbox, if you will. The timing of the tax credits, job thresholds met in tax year beginning on or after January 1st, 2012. And as I get into some of my next steps, you know, it's our intent to have this submitted this year. And the process to review the applications is typically, from what we're speaking with DCA, is four to six months. So while the application itself may not be approved, formally approved until, say, June, any job that come, because it was submitted prior to 2012, any job, any new job that's created from January 1 of 2013 on would be eligible for that tax credit. So I think that's a key point to make. So we can begin promoting this service once we, once we get the application in. And again, claim the credit on the year one tax return, you must maintain the year job one, the year one jobs for the next four years, and you can claim the credit for years two through five on your tax returns as well. And again, these are just, gives you some of the steps that are required for any new business coming in, the steps that are required by DCA to actually, to claim that tax credit, meet the eligibility criteria that we've gone over, complete and file the Opportunity Zone Certification Form with DCA, which is a form that's found on their website, file the Form IT, withholding with the Department of Revenue, file your original Georgia income tax return along with the Form ITCA with Department of Revenue by due date. And again, the note that they have is withholding credit may be claimed only after DOR validates the credit. So there are some steps in the process, but what we're doing, our step as a community, is to allow them access to this particular type of tax credit and incentive. So again, we felt it was something that was certainly worthwhile and needed within our community to help create jobs and, and encourage businesses to come and locate and stay, not just come and, new, new businesses, but again, for existing businesses to expand as well. The area we're focusing on immediately is the Bear Creek redevelopment area. Oh, come on back. This is the area located in the southwest corner of the county, adjacent to and including some parts of the city of Hampton as well. As you can see, the area that's highlighted in green and yellow, it encompasses our airport, the Atlanta Motor Speedway as well. And we've been working with the group, I think, they came up last week, Promaker, they've been doing a lot of great things in that area, and incentivizing and looking at plans for develop, in development within that area. So it actually, timing couldn't, couldn't have been better from their standpoint, because they're able to kind of use this and speak to corporations that are considering this area as a, as a tremendous incentive tool. All the work that's going on with the airport as it stands right now, able to parlay this incentive in conjunction with the work that's going on at the airport, again, to further bolster the economic, the airport as an economic driver for the community. So again, we felt this, from a priority standpoint, this was one of the most important ones to focus on, because there were some interests already had been, had been exhibited. So we're moving forward, focusing in on this area as, as our first application. This map gives a, an idea of some of the other areas we're looking at within this respective area. Come on back. The area to the left, obviously, again, is the Bear Creek area that we just spoke about, and you may be able to identify the corridors along State Route 20, along Highway 3, and along Highway 1941. Those would be the subsequent applications that we'll be focusing in as well. Identifying those corridors as potential for redevelopment as well. What we've been doing as a staff is going out, identifying those areas that are termed as blighted, or, in many cases, and particularly within the Bear Creek area, a lot of it was underdevelopment, as you may well imagine. And that's also the case with some of the Highway 3 areas and, and Highway 20 area. So that's also a criteria that's taken into consideration by DCA, so not all, you know, poverty or blighted, rather, but a lot of it is underdevelopment. There were some areas where businesses had previously existed, and they're no longer, it's now vacant, and those are all the criteria points that the DCA considers and looks at when they're viewing the application. So these are kind of the, the next focal points from our application standpoint. the Form IT, withholding with the Department of Revenue, file your original Georgia income tax return along with the Form ITCA with Department of Revenue by due date. And again, the note that they have is withholding credit may be claimed only after DOR validates the credit. So, there are some steps in the process, but what we're doing, our step as a community, is to allow them access to this particular type of tax credit and incentive. So, again, we felt it was something that was certainly worthwhile and needed within our community to help create jobs and encourage businesses to come and locate and stay, not just come and, new businesses, but again, for existing businesses to expand as well. The area we're focusing on immediately is the Bear Creek redevelopment area. Oh, come on back. This is the area located in the southwest corner of the county, adjacent to and including some parts of the city of Hampton as well. As you can see, the area that's highlighted in green and yellow, it encompasses our airport, the Atlanta Motor Speedway as well. And we've been working with the group, I think they came up last week, Promaker, they've been doing a lot of great things in that area, and incentivizing and looking at plans for develop, in development within that area. So, it actually, timing couldn't have been better from their standpoint, because they're able to kind of use this and speak to corporations that are considering this area as a tremendous incentive tool. All the work that's going on with the airport as it stands right now, able to parlay this incentive in conjunction with the work that's going on at the airport, again, to further bolster the economic, the airport has an economic driver for the community. So, again, we felt this, from a priority standpoint, this was one of the most important ones to focus on, because there were some interests already had been exhibited. So, we're moving forward, focusing in on this area as our first application. This map gives a, just an idea of some of the other areas we're looking at within this respective area. Come on back. The area to the left, obviously, again, is the Bear Creek area that we just spoke about. And you may be able to identify the corridors along State Route 20, along Highway 3, and along Highway 1941. Those would be the subsequent applications that we'll be focusing in as well, identifying those corridors as potential for redevelopment as well. And what we've been doing as a staff is going out, identifying those areas that are termed as blighted, or, in many cases, and particularly within the Bear Creek area, a lot of it was underdevelopment, as you may well imagine. And that's also the case with some of the Highway 3 areas and Highway 20 areas. So, that's also a criteria that's taken into consideration by DCA. So, not all, you know, poverty or blighted, rather, but a lot of it is underdevelopment. There were some areas where businesses had previously existed, and they're no longer, it's now vacant, and those are all the criteria points that the DCA considers and looks at when they're reviewing the application. So, these are kind of the next focal points from our application standpoint. Next steps in the process, we'll be conducting our Bear Creek pre-submitment meeting, site visit with the Department of Community Affairs, and that'll take place tomorrow, at which time we'll kind of show them, we'll go through, do a site visit, we'll drive the area, show them what we've compiled so far, share with them our parcel data information and our mapping, and take that in for consideration. They may give us suggestions typically, as I understand how it transpires. And then we're looking at the end of the week to go ahead and actually submit the application once we get everything, their final comments back from DCA tomorrow. They anticipate a review period of four to six months. And again, the focus has been on, the next steps will be identifying 1941, Highway 3, and the State Route 20 corridor applications, and we anticipate those. Because, again, a lot of the legwork has been done on those parcels already, we've gotten, we've gathered a number of the pictures for those areas, and so next step will be just finalizing that application as well. And then after that, and again, our hopes are identifying those two other areas, starting with the McDonough area, there's another poverty area that's identified at a 15% poverty level within the McDonough area, and another one in the Stockbridge area. So, you know, we're trying to be systematic in our approach. It's taken, you know, several months, and when we first started the process, Commissioner Eric Chairman Mathis brought it to our attention way back, first part of last year. And since that time, we've worked with a consultant to move forward in the process. And, you know, we're finally getting to that point now, we're ready to submit our first application. And, you know, a number of them have been done throughout the county, throughout the state, rather, and, you know, and counties have, cities, and counties have benefited them greatly throughout the state. So, that's it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address anything I can. Again, Bob White is here from Development Authority, any questions that you may have as far as how it benefits him as well.
In my conversation with Mike Beatty, who is our DCA Commissioner, I had discussed, you know, limiting these zones to specific areas, because I know that they really look at that, the process you go through to select the sites. He told me to put in as much as we wanted. So, I'm hoping that in filing these applications with DCA, that you're encompassing as large an area as you possibly can.
We are, and we're looking at, you know, there are some areas that are strictly residential areas that we didn't feel, you know, and again, for an argument's sake, we want to be able to still go back and, once we submit the application, be able to defend it. So, those areas that are highly concentrated with residential, we've kind of weaned those back and really looking at, that's what we focused on, the corridors, on those commercial corridors. In 1941, a lot of redevelopment opportunities. In State Route 20, we have some PDs that have been zoned some time back, but a lot of underdevelopment in those areas. So, we're looking at, again, not just in the first, next couple of years, but years on down the line on how we anticipate growth occurring within those corridors.
This is one instance where it is based solely on the discretion of the DCA Commissioner at whatever his will is. And so, anyway, he seems to be very friendly toward Henry County, and we need to try to, I don't want to say take advantage of that, but be as strategic as possible in getting these zones designated. But you did a great job, and Bob, you've done an outstanding job as well, and I thank y'all for really pushing this process and getting it in, because there were some rumblings that the General Assembly might even change the thresholds for poverty levels, which may have excluded a few of our areas. And by getting it in prior to the General Assembly, that will certainly preserve our ability to capture this incentive for future businesses. So, thank you both for all the hard work that you put into it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Preston.
Michael, just, I know we're focusing on the Bear Creek area here, but if you come back across 1941, Hampton's still included in some of this area too, correct?
It is.
You just focused on this area for today's presentation.
That's correct. And part of the Bear Creek area also encompasses portions of the city. And we have, we've been working in close conjunction with Andy Pippin, City Manager at Hampton, and they've been well aware, and they've been supportive throughout the process.
I'm sure.
Yeah, and other areas throughout Highway 3, well, again, it kind of comes right through the heart of Hampton, so that would be a big benefactor for them in that area.
Okay, Mike.
Yes, sir.
You gave this a map a few months ago, but can you remind me which area in Stockbridge was identified?
I want to say it's near and around the Ty Street area, I believe. And again, part of that will encompass North Henry Boulevard and East Atlanta, and areas around and near the City Hall. So, we had some early meetings with them, probably six months back, and, you know, haven't had any follow-up meetings since then, you know. But we're, again, we'll likely start back with the McDonough area, as process start with that area, and then work our way up to, work on, begin work on the Stockbridge area as well. We want to make sure we maximize all those areas within Henry County.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Holder.
I can't let Michael get away.
I was waiting, Commissioner, I knew it was coming.
You were just waiting, weren't you?
Yes, sir, I was.
All right. Do you have a map of the county that you could put up? I know there's one, and I'll exhibit it, but...
I have actually the map. You're referring to the low to mod income map in particular, or it's a countywide?
The countywide, where it shows where the opportunity zones are and the poverty zones are.
Let me just turn this one off, give it to you.
Okay. I thought you might have had one.
Hey, Mike.
Yes, that's us.
That's one thing. The reason for my comment, and Michael certainly knows where I'm coming from, back in April when this map was approved, it's refreshing to know that there's no poverty that exists in the Locust Grove area, when in fact, many of you think of and talk about people from Locust Grove as not quite being up to par. But the point is, there is no poverty zone there, but at the same time, there's no opportunity zone. So, that means that the businesses can't capitalize on these tax credits that are available to other parts of the county. And obviously, the explanation was made that it did not, the people in that area did not meet the threshold to qualify of, at the 15% poverty level, and therefore, it didn't happen. But I wanted the people to be able to see, once again, the southeastern part of Henry County was left out. The closest opportunity zone left in District One is right where we're sitting right now in McDonough. Is that not correct, Michael?
That's correct. And a small portion of the McDonough area extends over near King Mill, so will encompass some parts of that.
That is, that is correct, but it's all tied in, in this general area right here.
That's right.
So, it's good to know that no poverty exists in Locust Grove, and I feel that they'll feel strongly that that's exactly right, when obviously, we know that that's not right. But again, there's no opportunity zone there, so we move on. But when you're saying that they're willing to make this as lucrative as possible, and that we're helping Henry County, we may be, but let's remember the southeastern part at the same time.
And we'll continue to monitor as the opportunity zone maps are updated, and as soon as that becomes eligible, we'll certainly pursue that as well.
Mr. President.
I think, and I'm looking at exactly what Commissioner Holder's talking about, but I think if you slide up the entire eastern border of Henry County, you won't find very much. And I would have honestly thought, as much as I've been around the Fourth and Fifth District down through the years, especially in the Fairview area, and Austin Road Elementary School area, and the area where the, and I apologize for not remembering the name of the medical firm that's coming, it would have, of course, I understand, you got to start somewhere.
Right.
And we just got the 200,000, so we got to start somewhere. But truthfully, there's a, there's a whole lot more than just the southeast corner, it's actually the eastern border all the way to the DeKalb County border.
But bear...
With exception of a little, I understand.
But bear in mind, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Along that eastern border that we're talking about
Yes, sir.
In Districts One, Three, and Four, and Five.
Yes, sir.
Mostly residential, not a lot of business activity in those. I'm speaking of four cities in Henry County, three of which got it, one didn't get a thing. And I can't imagine that happening. But anyhow, it did. So, when you follow that line, look at it, you'll see, I mean, that's where the majority of the residential was.
Yes, right, but I also thought that, that other than 42, and I don't travel that area a whole lot, so, you know, educate me a little bit, but there's, that whole area and a whole lot of Locust Grove area in District One is, is either reservoirs or, I don't know about that much business other than 42, Highway 42.
Well...
But I know Tangerine, some others.
Correct. And, yeah, also, Bill Gardner Parkway, Highway even going to the east, many of those do have it, but anyhow.
Yes, right.
I don't want to get sidetracked on, but on the fringes of the county, obviously, that's more residential.
I wasn't trying to be adversarial, I was just saying it looked like that, you know, it looked like everything was on the...
And I agree, you got to start.
But you got to start somewhere.
You got to start somewhere, and it's kind of like some of these other things I've continued, it seems like the funding runs out when it gets to McDonough. Doesn't go any further to the south.
Well, one thing...
From what direction?
From the north to the south.
Note as well is that the census track information is the federal government information. It's not something that our staff
That's correct.
Came up with on their own. So, I just want to clarify that too for the, that may be watching.
I think that was made very clear in the April meeting, that this was a result of census, and I just don't understand it. I do not understand it.
Well, when you figure out the federal government, I advise you to write a book so that you can be quite wealthy.
I'm thinking about it.
I think you should, because there, sometimes there's no rhyme or reason behind the way things come out of Washington, so...
I just want to comment.
Mr. Preston.
Michael, first, thank you for doing this. I mean, I know, obviously, Henry County has got areas that we're trying to work with. Just to remind the citizens, the reason Hampton was chosen first, just because they were the only district that had poverty close to 20%.
That's correct.
And that's where it was kind of the white-hot center of where we wanted to address those desires. That's why we have the community block grants, there was a lot of discussion with that. Thank you, and I know, as, you know, the Madam Chair said, that if they're being liberal, let's try to get as many areas as possible in McDonough, Locust Grove, Stockbridge, so that we can hopefully wipe out all these issues that we have with poverty and poor income.
Yep. Certainly look to maximize as much as possible.
Thank you for the presentation. Great information. And that is a non-action item, that was for informational purposes only. And again, Bob White, I want to thank you and for working along with Michael to get this moving forward. Thank you. The next...
If I could, I'd just like to make one comment since Bob is here, and I know this will be the last meeting that I'll be at. I've said this before, but I want to say one more time, that our Development Authority, in many cases, catch a lot of grief by not attracting and having the type businesses that we in 2013 want. I want you to be reminded of one thing, though, so many times, we've missed the fact of where we are, and it may not be exactly where we need to be, but we need to see where we have come from. Henry County warehousing, we don't need any more big box warehousing. Well, ladies and gentlemen, I ask every one of you to ride, go through these industrial parks, and I want you to see the multi-millions of dollars of investments that people have put into Henry County. Start right here on Highway 155, West Ridge Parkway, Eagles Landing Parkway, where the industrial areas have located. Why do they locate here? It wasn't because of Bob White, it wasn't because of this Board of Commissioners, because of the location of Henry County and the proximity to Atlanta, the airport, and the ports in Savannah. That's why these warehouses are here. Do we want to do better and get higher-paying jobs? We absolutely do. We want to attract white-collar businesses, that becomes very competitive. And Bob, without going any further, I just want to say, I thank you for the investment that you have got and have done a part of getting into Henry County for the last 16 years that I've been here, and it goes back even further than that, because I've watched it for the last 40 years. But we had to come from somewhere, and to say that this business that we have here now is not welcomed and warranted, I think is a total injustice. Thank you so much for what you've done.
Thank you, Commissioner, and to the topic of the opportunity zone, this is something the Development Authority has been very happy to be involved with and supporting this effort. But I need to tell anybody what a dark cloud, an economic cloud that we've been under, not just Henry County, obviously, the nation, but over the last several years. And if that dark cloud had a silver lining, I think it is the data that came out of the 2010 census that did show those areas that would potentially qualify for an opportunity zone. And to your point, that does not mean that you don't have poverty in District One, and you certainly do. The good news is you don't have insufficient quantities to at least reach that goal, but the opportunity zone and the other efforts that we've got underway here will continue to put Henry County in front. This will match the highest level of statutory incentives anywhere in the state of Georgia. And if you look back over the last several years in Georgia, a number of the large projects that have located have been in opportunity zones in other areas. So, this is another tool in our toolkit, air on our quiver, however you want to characterize it, but we appreciate very much your support. The Board of Commissioners have been tremendously supportive of economic development. This board in particular has been tremendous to work with. We bid farewell to several of you with this meeting, I guess, but we appreciate your commitment. I think that the investments that y'all have made and the tough decisions that you've had to make will bode well for Henry County for many, many years to come. And I think the opportunity zone would just further that, and I think we can look back in a few years and point to these specific actions as something that y'all have done to further Henry County and economic development in Henry County. We appreciate your support.
Thank you, Bob. All right, moving on in the agenda, we have a resolution to amend an ordinance regarding the sale and consumption of beer and wine at select county facilities, and regarding the use of recreational facilities designated solely for youth sports. Our presenter is Michael Harris, Planning and Zoning Services Division Director, and Tim Coley, Directors of Parks and Recreation, that's exhibit number five in your book. And if you remember, Board, this item was tabled from the last meeting, Mr. Preston was at new commissioner training, and since this involves or affects a park located in his district, we wanted to wait until he was here to be part of the discussion. So, good morning.
Good morning, again, and thank you for having us. It is, it is, we're bringing this item back, but we've also made a slight amendment to it as well to address another issue that's become prevalent in some of our parks, so we'll just kind of briefly go through the proposed changes, and again, myself and Tim are here to address any questions that you may have. Commentations recently been contacted concerning a request to sell and consume alcohol, alcohol, beer and wine only at certain select events. Currently, Section 3-13-4A6 of our current county code prohibits alcohol consumption in any park or recreation area, and that code section states that it shall be unlawful for any person to consume or use alcoholic beverages or intoxicants in any park or recreation area. Staff is prepared for the Board's consideration, amendment to this code section to allow alcoholic beverages, again, beer and wine only, at three county-owned locations, those being Nash Farm Park, Heritage Park, and the Locust Grove Event Center. And we actually went back and amended the Heritage Park to make sure we're specific on the arena and the building facility only. Any proposed event which proposes the sale or use of alcohol would have to be approved by the Henry County Recreation Commission and adhere to several noted conditions, which I'll go through in a second. Staff has also received numerous complaints concerning, and getting to the second part of this, over the years, we've received numerous complaints regarding adults playing on fields designated specifically and only for the youth. So, we wanted to make sure we added a provision within the same code section that specifically addressed and prohibited adults from utilizing facilities, those being fields, courts, gyms, whatever it may be, that have been specifically set aside and designated for the use of our youth. I just want to make, want to clarify that point within our code section. Yes, sir. Well, one particular instance, I think it was in Commissioner Holder's district, where we had incidences where adults were playing on a field designated for youth, and because the field was sized principally for youth, when the adults got on the field, they were hitting balls way over, way beyond the extent of the field, into private, onto private property. You know, so again, we've gone through a number of steps that the county took, installed nets and things of that nature to kind of help prevent that. But again, the issue behind that was... to kind of help prevent that, but again, you know, the, the issue behind that was adults playing on a field that was designed and designated just for youth, so we want to go ahead and make, make that provision clear. Going back to the issue with the alcohol, the request for the, to serve alcohol in certain locations, the code section three dash thirteen dash four, um, item number six A, the changes being proposed are, um, again, I'll read the entire code section, it should be unlawful for any intoxicated person to enter or remain in any park or recreational area, it should also be unlawful for any person to consume or use alcoholic beverages or intoxicants in any park or recreation area. Six under that provision is the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine only, shall be permissible at the following county locations only, um, Nash Farm Park, the Heritage Park Arena and Building Area only, and the Locust Grove Event Center and shall meet the following conditions, one, written approval from the Henry County Recreation Commission for each proposed event, two, meet all applicable local jurisdictional requirements, and noted Locust Grove and McDonough, as two of those facilities are located in their jurisdictions, meet all the requirements of the Henry County Code section three dash fourteen dash twenty-two, which addresses the times at which, um, alcohol may be served. Four, the individual company responsible for the sale dispensing of the beer and, and wine must possess a valid alcohol license issued through the Georgia Department of Revenue, as well as a valid alcohol license from a Georgia municipality, city, or county, which allows them to sell and/or dispense alcoholic beverages, buy the drink off, off licensed premises. Um, so from that standpoint, if it's a, if it's a, a restaurant, Chili's or, or Olive Garden, they would have a, a valid license that's already served alcohol, so this would allow them, they'd have to have that in order to be able to sell alcohol at a license at a location off of their stand, off of their established premises. Um, item number five, a police officer must be present for the duration of the event, and that would be at the applicant's expense, and number six would be any other stipulations imposed by the rec, by the Recreation Commission, so we didn't want to tie the Recreation Commission if they felt additional stipulations were required, so they have that right to also, um, make any other conditions that they deem would be appropriate for that particular event. And we also added item number fifteen under the same section, which states that it should be unlawful for anyone age eighteen and older to participate in any recreational activity in any public park, in any spec, in any specific areas, fields, et cetera, where such has been designated for youth recreational activities only, other than those engaged in the coaching of the youth, so I, obviously, coaches can be present on the fields, but, you know, not for teams to come out and utilize their, their, their facilities, and the penalties for any of these violations is noted under, um, section three dash thirteen dash fif, dash five. Happy to address any questions, Tim or I? Can speak to him.
Mr. Stame.
Michael, who is the Henry County Recreation Commission?
He's referring to the Recreation Board.
So the Rec, the Rec Board.
Right, and I, and our code is referred to as the Recreation Commission.
Do we need to fix that, Latonya, or, because I've never heard of a recreation, Rec Recreation Commission.
We can, we can fix that.
Yeah, that's easy.
Yeah, we can amend that, there are a few things I know in our ordinance we need to tie up, so.
Yeah, we can, yeah, and we, you know, that language, that language that was located within the ordinance, but certainly we can clean that language up, but I think you're right, I think it's commonly referred to as the Rec Board.
Then we can put it in, in parance in that proposed, um, the Henry, the Parks and Recreation Board.
We can do that.
Or the Recreation Board.
Any other questions or comments from the Board?
Now, the comment, and I'd like to address it back to Commissioner Holmes, that did occur, and what happened, kids would get together, not kids, but, uh, grownups on a weekend, and there's no supervision, and they would go to, to a field and have a home run derby, and they damaged houses, in fact, I don't know if we are out of a lawsuit on that yet or not, but, uh, this lady collected hun- hundred more balls that had ended up on her property, knocked windows, broke windows, damaged roofs, siding, what have you, so that was the reason, and that's the issue, and signs have been posted, and this will just help to enforce the, the, the fines, that it was like a thousand dollar fine, I believe, didn't it, us?
Commissioner Holder, the police department would call me quite frequently about that problem, and we had an enforcement problem, because although we had the signs up, we did not have an ordinance to back it up, to give the officers the ability to issue a citation, this now gives the officers the ability to issue a citation and get the violators into court, and hopefully that will be a strong deterrent to stop that activity on those fields that are not designed for adult activities.
This sounds like something that's minor, but, uh, if you lived in that house, you wouldn't think it was minor, and, uh, this is just doing the final cleanup work to make it enforceable.
Any other questions or comments pertaining to this item?
I guess my comment would be, and I understand the situation, I think I remember them coming in, um, but, um, I think the language needs to be specific to those particular fields that were designed for kids, so, um.
It's a good point, yeah, I think we can, we can still, for the parks that we currently have, for the ten, but maybe designate certain parks as only being for youth only, um, and utilizing signage perhaps.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm praying to Commissioner Holmes, and I, I don't think, again, we don't want, the intent was not to tell adults they can't use a basketball court or a football field, because they have that right to use those recreational, um, areas, but those, it should only be a few things, I think, and I think even with Commissioner Bowman may have had some issues with, you know, we have playground equipment, very expensive equipment, um, if you're adult, that's, that was designed for children, that adults were using, and I'm not really sure where the line is drawn, I'll just have to defer to Tim and his board to, um, look at those and make a rational decision and a limit to just those areas that are specifically geared to, to children. I, I know some, some, um, equipment is, are, they're not designed to handle, um, adults using them, um, and you can damage the equipment, very expensive equipment, I think.
Yeah, I think the majority of it would be baseball, softball, where you have field dimensions, you know, a football field's, you know, a hundred, a hundred yards long, whether you're youth or adult or whatever, but, but like, a T-ball field's a hundred and twenty, and a nine and ten field's two hundred, you know, and, but our adult fields are three hundred feet, you know, so I think baseball and softball, where you get dimension differences is where the majority of your problem is.
Yeah, we can just, to the record, you to go, as the county attorney noted, and put si, utilize signage to designate those specific areas within reason.
Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, you have before you an ordinance to amend section three dash thirteen dash four of chapter three dash thirteen, Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs of the Henry County Code, which addresses prohibited acts within county parks, and I will entertain a motion. Have a motion to approve by Mr. Holder and a second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? All opposed. Okay, motion carries three, two, with Commissioners Holmes, Preston, and Holder in favor, and Commissioner Stamey and Commissioner Bowman in opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, rezoning RZ dash twelve dash zero eight, Kevin and Donna Carrington of Hampton, Georgia, request a rezoning from RA to C three for property located at twenty-three twenty-five, Highway nineteen forty-one, and thirty-one oh-two Brown Drive, in land lots one-ten and eighty-three of the third district, the property consists of one point two-six plus or minus acres, and the request is for a used car sales lot, the property is located within Commission District Two, and our presenter is Sherry Hopson Matthews, Planning and Zoning Director, and that is exhibit number six. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members, um, as Sherman Matthews has indicated, the request before you this morning is the rezoning request from RA to C three for one point two-six plus or minus acres, um, the applicant is looking to combine actually two tracts of land, which are located along nineteen forty-one and Brown Drive, um, the applicant is seeking to utilize the property today simply for a used car lot, um, the future land use map does designate this property for a commercial designation, and the zoning advisory board did recommend approval of the request with two zoning conditions, um, it is staff's understanding that the applicant is not looking to make any major renovations to the facility, but to utilize what's currently on the property, uh, which is a single-family home that he will use a portion of that property to convert for an office, um, he will also be required to make sure that the parking lot is brought up to parking standards, and that there are adequate parking spaces available for the property. Um, again, the zoning advisory board did hear the request and recommend approval with two zoning conditions, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Member have questions, Mr. Preston?
The question I have is just, nineteen forty-one is such a, a busy highway, and curb cuts, obviously, for traffic patterns and everything else, any, I, I didn't see if, you know, besides the comments from the county manager on deceleration lanes or anything, is anything that'll be required or needed that's going to be expenses that go beyond what, what we're looking at, address that for me with that, that traffic.
And he will certainly be required to make, um, an application to the Georgia Department of Transportation, um, once any type of development plans are submitted, it's my understanding that there's already an existing driveway there, and that he will just be required to bring that up to, um, whatever standards GDOT will require, um, I'm not aware of anything else unless Terry knows of anything more particularly.
Seek a permit, I'm sure, to upgrade that, and if they want him to do that, it'll be part of that access permit from GDOT.
But, but Terry, answer this for me, is it, is it, I mean, businesses are different than residences, because you have, you know, one or two cars at most residences where a business will have traffic coming in and out, and mess, you know, and curb cuts obviously impact traffic and safety and other things, is there any additional requirements on, on those businesses, or are they just, you know, to have a, a deceleration lane or a turn lane essentially, or is it not, not really?
The GDOT requirements are usually based on the volume of traffic coming in and out of that business, for instance, if it's a business that maybe had eight or ten cars a day, they would not likely warrant, you know, a decel lane, but if it's a business that may generate like a hundred cars an hour coming in, you can pretty well be assured that they would, you know, require a, a right turn lane or a decel lane into it at that, so their, uh, access permit, the guidelines for those are based on a, you know, what kind of business is and the volumes that they, that they bring in, they look at it based on that.
And was that all addressed in this, did you have any concerns when, did, any, any issues with that, or was there just not enough volume to be a concern?
I, I'm not sure on this particular one, it being GDOT, um, we don't get involved in them submitting their traffic studies, all that goes directly to GDOT, so we're not in the, in the steps when they, you know, make their application for permits with Georgia DOT.
Okay.
And Commissioner Preston, um, David Simmons from Terry's office did review the application and noted that GDOT would have full control, but he did make a zoning condition that in the event that the applicant chooses to develop the rear of the property, that there be interparcial connectivity, um, so there won't be two separate access points on the property, so that is a zoning condition.
Okay, and if there was any requirement from GDOT, it would be at the applicant's expense?
Yes, sir, it would be, and what will probably occur is when the applicant pulls a permit to actually go out and, the parking spaces, and he'll have to pull a development permit, at that time, the development office will send the plans to GDOT for their review and comment.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for Sherry?
Does this proposed business qualify for the new opportunity zone, is it in the opportunity zone?
I do not think that this property is.
Not in the fair, free, public way.
Application is done, so, it could possibly.
When you're speaking of redevelopment, and if we're going to address the real need and the real problem, this is certainly in a location that would be an improvement, and it will, will help to improve the area.
It fails the husband and wife, just, so this says Donna and Kevin Carrington, unless, unless he's going to hire salespeople, so.
Right, there'd be other, other.
They're just applying for the zoning, but I put them seeing it.
Oh, you're right, exactly right, yeah.
Any employees he hired could qualify him and get the thirty-five hundred dollar a year tax credit.
Any other questions or comments for Sherry? All right, if not, I'd like to ask if the applicant or their representative is here this morning, if so, could you please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and you have fifteen minutes to add anything else you'd like to add.
Thank you for having me up, Kevin Carrington, uh, my address is eight Richard Road, Hampton, Georgia, I really don't have any questions or comments, I mean, it would be greatly appreciated if I can qualify for some, any help that we can get with this new business, um, you know, as, uh, Mr. Holder indicated, it, it is my wife and I that are applying for the zoning change, um, however, our intentions are to have probably around five employees at, at some point, uh, we are a small business now, um, operating right down the road in Sunnyside, but certainly want to bring the business to Henry County, um, so, if, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Does anyone have a question for Mr. Carrington? Okay. If not, then at this time, I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to this request, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the request? All right, if there's no further questions from the Board, I will, um, look to you, Mr. Preston, for a motion.
Will you approve what the conditions placed by the staff?
We have a motion to approve with the staff recommended conditions, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor, motion carries five zero. Thank you. Moving on to the solicitor's office, we have a resolution requesting award of a bid for the purchase of a Centus Mobile Field Lab, our presenter is Trey Pipkin of the, he is our Solicitor General, and that's exhibit number seven, good morning.
Good morning, I've asked Chief Nichols to join me up here in case there are any questions, he may be able to speak a little bit more to the technical stuff, um, I wanted to give the Board a little bit of background on exactly where we're coming from, sometimes when you get into police lingo, you get caught up in the lingo and not in the actual facts, but in two thousand and four, uh, my predecessor, who was Chuck Spahas, on behalf of the Solicitor General's Office, and Tommy Floyd, who is our current district attorney, as well as the three chiefs from the city police departments, Hampton, Locust Grove, and McDonough, all got together and created a joint task force, uh, in two thousand and eight, the sheriff's office of Henry County joined that task force, putting in two of his budgeted, salaried deputies into that task force. Two thousand and ten, the county joined us, County Police Department, putting in several agents as well, in the interim between two thousand and eight and two thousand and ten, uh, there was a request on behalf of the joint task force by the solicitor's office for funds that came from a grant paid for by the federal government, uh, that grant, which was awarded to us in two thousand and nine, would pay for one sheriff deputy from the sheriff's department, pay that salary, and then equip two, uh, two total, um, agents, so it would pay that deputy and his equipment, or her equipment, and then another agent's equipment, it was substantial. The sheriff put in an agent, and we equipped that agent, in two thousand and twelve, there was still money left, it was a three-year grant, so the grant ends at midnight on December thirty-first of this year, in two thousand and twelve, when I became Solicitor General, after that happened, the sheriff had three, uh, agents in that task force, two of them were funded by his budget, and the other was funded by this grant, the agent, for whatever reason, who was funded by the grant, requested to come out of the task force and go back to his duties at the sheriff's department, and the sheriff honored that request and moved him out, there were essentially four or five months left on the grant, you could not re-designate one of the deputies the sheriff had placed into the task force as a, an agent that would be paid for salary and equipment by this grant, in other words, they were already existing agents, so the sheriff had a choice, he could either put in another agent for the last four or five months of the grant, of course, he'd have to pull him back out again in January one, because there would be no money for him, or he could elect to just leave the money in the pot, and that is what the sheriff did, and, um, I would concur that that was a good management decision for the funds, so, all that being said, is that there were about fifty-two thousand dollars left in, in grant monies that were not used by the Flint Circuit Drug Task Force, so, I had been on board a few months, and had asked my chief investigator to make an adjustment request with the federal government as we were monitoring the grant, and that adjustment request would allow us to then essentially broaden the scope for where we could use that fifty-two thousand dollars, we would then be able to use that money, uh, as the task force needs permitted, or came up, and we would be permitted to use it for equipment for all the agents, or maybe even none of the agents, but that would benefit the joint task force as a whole, and that, uh, request was allowed, and they had permitted us to do so. The commander of the Flint Circuit Drug Task Force is Major Chad Rossborough, he is a major with the McDonough Police Department, and he oversees his agents, and he's actually here today, uh, we asked him, what is your, what are your needs, and he gave us a list of those, and we requested that, there was still some money left on the table, uh, for those needs that had not been met, and. There was still some money left on the table for those needs that had not been met, and we went to him and said, we've got a little bit left. Do you have a want? And he said, yes. He said, there is a mobile drug lab out there that would allow us to send an agent on scene whenever a police officer had pulled somebody over or was in a house and had found an unknown substance that may be drugs, or had found a substance where it was a pill, and it was a homemade pill, and it was difficult to determine what type of drug that may be. It is, you know, common, and I think that this board is aware that police officers only have to meet the standard of probable cause in order to make an arrest. And so they may do that by determining that this drug is what they believe it is, cocaine or heroin or whatever. And they have tests. They have what we call in the business roadside test. You break this test over the substance, and then it comes back with a color. And so oftentimes, officers are trying to decide, was the color blue or is the color purple? Is this really the narcotic we think it is? This test is still a presumptive test, meaning we cannot use this in evidence, but it does give us with uncanny accuracy, almost like we'd send it to the crime lab. It tells these officers what that substance is, what that narcotic is, which would in effect minimize any quote-unquote mistakes, they're not really mistakes, but any misidentification that an officer may have based on the little roadside test. So we started accepting bids for this mobile drug lab, and the lowest bid was by Centis Mobile Field Lab 3,000, and the amount was for $12,900, and that gives us the mobile drug lab, as well as 12 months of updates and subscriptions to that. This would help the police and primarily the Flint Circuit Drug Task Force in identifying synthetic marijuana, pills, any other substances that they would label as unknown substances on the side of the road, but their instincts tell them it's something, but we've got to send it off to the crime lab then to determine what that is. This would assist them in doing that. This is, of course, a grant, so because it is more than $10,000, you guys have to approve it. The county would pay for it, and the federal government would reimburse us the $12,900. If the board were not wanting to do this, this would be $12,900 of federal money that's guaranteed to us that we would be leaving on the table starting January 31st at midnight.
Okay. Well, from a lawsuit standpoint, and I know this probably takes our county attorney back to a situation we had last year, if we'd had the availability of something like this that we may not have gotten in the situation we'd gotten into, with the officer with great intentions and everything seemed good, but in the end, it didn't pan out to be what he thought it was. So anyway, without going into any more detail, I think this is a great opportunity. My question would be on training. Is there going to be some specific training for the person who is using this on how to use it properly? Is that covered in the cost, or will there be some additional cost needed?
Yeah, let me answer that in three short sub-points. The first one is that, yes, there is initial training for the agents. The second is that this, and that is included in the cost of the $12,900. The second is that this whole system was designed to be used with minimal training, absolutely minimal training. I mean, the idea is you don't have to be a chemist to do this. The idea is for law enforcement to worry about their one job, and that is catching bad guys. So you can take a pill, and you've got a little cap on the machine, and you put the pill on the machine, and you squeeze that cap down, and the machine does all the work. Without being too technical, it uses infrared lighting, it sends light waves through the substance, and they know that hydrocodone comes back with a different light wave than heroin would. And based on that light wave, it'll then tell the police officer with a nice little printout sheet what they've got. You've got marijuana, you've got heroin, you've got ecstasy, you've got methamphetamine, you've got cocaine, whatever. And the third little sub-point of that answer would be, I'm sure most of you have either seen or make use of an iPhone and iPhone technology. Well, whenever Apple sends you updates on your iPhone, when you go to click on your iPhone, Apple tells you, you've got an update. Do you want to accept the update? And you push a button, and the update just starts working for you. That's what happens with this machine. They send updates to all their machines. They may send them daily, they may send them weekly, whenever there's an update. And so officers will, when they click on the machine, they will push the button to update, and those updates will happen. Because of those updates, it keeps training to a very, very, very bare minimum that would be necessary for officers to appropriately use the machine.
Does any board member have a question or a comment? All right, if not, you have a resolution before you approving the purchase of a Centis Mobile Field Lab 3,000 for the office of the Solicitor General in the amount of $12,900, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. May I say that I know this is for three of you, your last meeting. Thank you for your service. Henry County appreciates it. Thank you for your friendship to me, too.
Thank you, Trey. Next item on the agenda is under Finance. The following requests will be presented by the Finance Director, Mike Bush. Do we need to take these separately, or all, you want to present them all together?
I think they can be presented all together and then taken.
And then approve each resolution separately. We have a resolution requesting adoption of the amended and restated ACCG 457B Deferred Compensation Plan. We have a resolution requesting authorization of a master trust agreement, and we have a resolution requesting adoption of the Administrative Services Agreement. And those are all exhibit nine.
Yes, ma'am. Without going through that presentation I went through last time, here's an example. Here's the old Administrative Services Agreement, and where it says between Henry County and GEBCor. The new one says between Henry County, the Associated County Commissions of Georgia, and this Board of Trustees. This is also GEBCor. So they added this Board of Trustees to do some of the work for this master trust agreement, which basically just says when the IRS changes a definition, does absolutely nothing to the plan, this board will make that adoption instead of us having to bring back before the board a change such as this. They will implement it, and we will get a new copy, but you're just giving them the ability to make a change that does not intentionally affect the plan. If it affects the plan, it will still come back before this board. The other is, this is the new 457 Deferred Compensation Plan for Henry County. Again, there's some terminology changes and some sectional changes in there that the ACCG has created for us, and let's see if I got that. This plan is now, has an addition to it, which this is one that just has all the checkmarks that you do, all we do right now, things that we don't do right now, and it added the ones for the IRS that talked about additional things that we can now do, like we could accept a Roth IRA contribution, but our current payroll system will not do that. So until we get a new payroll system, it's an option that's out there, but Henry County does not permit it at this time. Once we're able to permit it, if we want to, if the board wants to, we can come back in here and permit things like that. But that's what the resolution, we wrote a single resolution, or they wrote a resolution, I'm sorry, GEBCor did, that basically does ask you to approve the adoption of the Administrative Services Agreement and the Master Trust Agreement, also to delegate ACCG Defined Contribution Board the power to, in the future, for limited purposes, of adopting nondiscretionary Internal Revenue Service requirement amendments that must be adopted on a timely basis in order to maintain its status as an eligible deferred compensation plan, and then also to have the chairman sign all this documentation. In a nutshell, it's just a few changes that we had to put in this thing and for you guys to allow the Defined Contribution, Deferred Compensation Board to make those nondiscretionary adoptions for you.
Mr. Preston?
And the trustees, doesn't it actually add a level of protection to the Board of Commissioners to a degree? I mean, it's part of the IRS changes because I know 43Bs, 457s, they've changed because there's some fiduciary obligations. So it actually helps us having them serve as a layer of protection?
Correct.
If I understand that correct. I went through and looked at the fee structure. It looks like the fees are going to be accelerated. The way I broke, the breakeven is $17,500. For plan accounts that are under $17,500, there's going to be a little bit higher fee, but if your account balance is over $17,500, you're saving significant money on what they get as their fee structure. The question I have is, who determined that 140 basis points on the first $5,000? Is that a standard, or do they negotiate that with us?
That is a standard for GEBCor with people who are between $4 million and $9 million. Once we hit the $10 million mark, that 140 goes to 100. It actually will drop down.
And how big are we total?
Like 9 million something. We're right at the threshold to be at the. The other thing is, when they were doing this calculation, the, it's almost a breakeven in Henry County's plan, but what was happening is the people with the $50,000 balance was paying all these fees, and where people who are, may have $3,000 in the account and aren't even participating anymore, it's just sitting there. This is to get them to either come back in there and participate, you know, to grow the fund so that we get to the $10 million point, so that our fees drop. But again, it's basically, GEBCor did a study of all other 457 plans, so to speak, and that ACCG board that oversees the pension plans for GEBCor, that board is the one who came up with these calculations.
So that leads to another question, because I didn't realize we were so close with 9 million. Is there any way that we can structure it with them, with what we're approving with these changes, that as soon, because $1 million could be one good quarter of performance as well as our contributions, that as soon as we hit 10 million, they'll, we don't have to come put this above the board again, we just, our employees get the lower fees? How is that? Because we're so close, I don't understand why we couldn't somehow work where we're getting the better fee structure as soon as we cross the 10 million. Is that something that's possible?
I would assume we could definitely get with GEBCor and say, when we hit the $10 million mark, we want to know, and we could quickly bring this resolution back since we just talked about it.
Okay.
But if not, I don't know if you can, if you can vote to approve something that hasn't happened yet, but when it happens, it's already approved. I don't know if you can.
Is that, I'm just trying to figure out, we save money for the employees.
We definitely can put a tickler on the account, and when it hits the $10 million mark, bring it back as fast as possible to get it back before the board to save the employees. Because you're right, it could be one quarter, two quarters, it may be another year. I think we have, on contributions going into the 457 plan, about $300,000 a year for current Henry County employees. Now, it's a lot more than that, but there's 770 employees that have money in the 457 plan, and 300 and something actually are participating currently, so it's, there's a lot of people with money in it who have retired, just haven't pulled the money out yet, some things. And there's nothing we can do with those, but the active employees who would benefit from this can definitely, as soon as we get the thing over the $10 million mark, bring it back before the board.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution to adopt the amended and restated ACCG 457 Deferred Compensation Plan as presented, and I'll look for a motion. Have a motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to County Manager, we have a resolution requesting approval of a professional agreement with LPA engineers pertaining to capital improvements at Atlanta South Regional Airport. Our presenter is Fred Aletta, County Manager, exhibit number 10. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners, what I have before you is a, I call it a cleanup, I guess. Back when we entered into an agreement, professional services with the two firms, Croy and LPA, initially, the firm of LPA was doing a lot of work with regards to getting us going, maps, drawings, and preparing for the EA and ALP. Croy has been the primary consultant on the expansion, but prior to awarding the expansion to Croy, Henry County had LPA do more reimbursable preliminary work in the project while they were working on the update to the environmental project that they were tasked with. This task order, the one presently in front of you, will reimburse Henry County for the work performed by LPA during the early stage, earlier this year, of the expansion project. Total cost of the task orders, $9,750, 90% reimbursement by FAA and GDOT, and there's a typo there, it should be local match, it would be 975, not 950. The resolution speaks in terms of percentages, so the resolution is okay with the 90%. It's just the executive summary with the $25 difference there. Answer any questions you may have.
Does any board member have a question or comment?
Just a comment, a question, I guess. This is for work that's already been done, it's not for future work.
No, this is for work.
This is reimbursement for that first time, and I just want to make that clear.
Yeah, and GDOT has, as I said, approved the reimbursement at the 90%. This is, a lot of fast and furious work was being done in January, February, and most of this is in that timeframe.
Any other questions or comments? If not, Madam Clerk, there is a typo in the header of the resolution, the word Atlanta. If you could correct that before I sign the document, if it's approved. There's no further questions, I'll look for a motion. Have a motion by Mr. Holder and a second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Next item is under Stormwater. We have a resolution requesting approval of a Stormwater Facility Maintenance Agreement. Our presenter is Butch Oliver, Director of Stormwater, and that's handout number one.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioner.
Good morning.
This is a maintenance agreement between Henry County and the city of McDonough on the detention pond that we just built down here at the entrance of the parkway. It's just a standard agreement saying that we will maintain it and keep it up.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to that item? Mr. Stamey?
Mr. Oliver, did you have an opportunity to review this?
Yes, sir, I did.
You're coming with this agreement?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, you have before you a resolution for the maintenance agreement, and I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, is there a second? Second by Mr. Preston, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. The next item is exhibit number 11, which is a resolution accepting the request of the Tax Commissioner to return the delegated authority of making final determinations regarding the waiver of assessed penalties and interest on unpaid ad valorem taxes to the Board of Commissioners. You also have a letter in your exhibit book and have probably had an opportunity, or I hope you have, to read that over the weekend, and if there's no, if there's no discussion on this with the county attorney, I will look for someone to make a motion to approve the resolution to receive those authorities back to the Board of Commissioners.
Reluctantly, Madam Chair, I will make the motion to take it back because I think it is, I hate to see him give that up because he is in the position that can work with people. We know it's a downed economy. We know things are tough, people have problems paying their taxes. Everybody has to pay their taxes. This is not what we're talking about here. There's some penalty and interest. But I want you to look at also at the Tax Commissioner's collection rate today and compare it to other jurisdictions. Compare it to previous years here in Henry County, and see what he has accomplished and what has happened when he has some discretion under the law, not this law, state law, to waive some penalties. That means that he may get the taxes collected, when if he had to collect tax, penalty and interest, he might not get anything. Might get the property, well, who wants the property anymore? I just, like I said, I'm making that motion, but I wish that the future board would reconsider this, and I don't think that the future board knows what it's getting into when you have to deal with the tax issues. That's just my opinion. And with that, Madam Chair, I move to approve the resolution.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second? Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Mr. Holder, I do want to comment, too. Our Tax Commissioner has done an exceptional, exceptional job in collecting the taxes and certainly was a good steward of the taxpayers' money and did a great job when he had these duties assigned to him. So I just wanted to agree with you and follow up with you on that. All right? We tabled items 14 and 15, so now we're going to We tabled items fourteen and fifteen, so now we're going to move to the approval of the minutes. They're scheduled to approve. Commissioner Preston was absent for one of the meetings, so we're looking for approval of August twenty-eighth, September seventeenth, October second, and October sixteenth, when all Commissioners were present. Are there any additions to those meetings? All right, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Bowman, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Then we have the August thirty-first call meeting where Commissioner Preston was not present. If there are no additions to those minutes, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries four zero, four zero one, well, actually four zero with an abstention. Okay. The next item on the agenda is public comment, and this is where citizens are allowed to vote, voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, of items that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak for public comment must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting, and you will be able to address the board for five minutes. We have one citizen who did sign up to speak to the board, Jane Eskew Rutledge of eight fifty-eight, I'm not sure of the, the street. Okay, Honey Creek Road, McDonough, and she wants to speak on the topic of county's tax rate and support of a senior center in Stockbridge. And if you would step to the podium, and you have five minutes.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Jane Eskew Rutledge, I reside at eight fifty-eight Honey Creek Road, McDonough, Georgia. Thank you, Ms. Mathews and the Commissioners. In the Sunday, December sixteenth, two thousand twelve AJC, the reported accumulated property value of all eleven counties was presented, where in the spring, we had thought that, if I, my memory serves me, thirty-five to maybe max thirty-nine percent overall drop. According to the AJC, where Henry is at a forty-five percent, all of the eleven counties are above their projected accumulated property values, with the two thousand twelve tax bills being on record. I want to thank Ms. Mathews and the Commissioners for their judgment and decisions that I have at times had adverse opinions of. We all learn from our mistakes, including myself. However, we have to work to serve the taxpaying citizen, the senior citizens in the community, in the Henry County Board of Education first, in my opinion. With a horrible recession showing no signs of recovery, the incoming Commission Chairman, Mr. Smith, and the two incoming Commissioners are going to have to have a long, hard battle to work with the deficit that we've had to fund the county and the spending. Thank God we've had outstanding decision-making school board superintendents, from Dr. Baker when I was a child to date. From Dr. Baker to two thousand twelve, our schools have been led by individuals who had a great vision for the future. They have been well-educated, community-oriented, and level-headed, only seeking the best for our children from the fifties to the two thousands. We've got to make the airport a viable money-making venture, as we all have come to realize. In any way that I can support anybody or help in any way, I would be more than happy to. I thank Ms. Mathews, Mr. Holmes, Mr. Preston, Mr. Stamey, Mr. Holder, and Mr. Bowman for their continuing efforts to keep the county above water with the economic conditions that they or nobody else had no control over. Warren and Mr. Stamey, we're going to miss you. Y'all have done an outstanding job. Ms. Mathews, we thank you, and I'm sorry that I've been at adverse opinions at times with you, but that's the way Henry County is. We all stand up for what we were raised to believe. And as the incoming Commission starts January the first, I just hope that the whole county can rally behind y'all and we can do what's best and bring Henry County forward like we've got it going. It's going to be a long, hard roll, but the one thing that I'm hoping for is the other Henry County, Mr. Preston, you've got your senior center. I would love to see a senior center in Stockbridge. I know they're working on something that they're terming a senior center, but I've been fighting for this, Warren, since nineteen eighty-two. Mr. Bowman, you were here, I think, that early in eighty-two, but the others, I don't think y'all would have had any recollection of it, but we've been working for a senior center long and hard. I just ask that you give the district a Stockbridge, all the help that you can in getting a senior center. That is my one accomplishment that I want to see before I die. But I'm not planning on going anywhere. But thank all of you, and in the future, if we can pull together and continue working, one day the horizon's going to get greater, one day maybe the recession will end, but as of for right now, we've got a long, hard road to carry. And thank you for your cooperation, and like I say, if there's anybody I've offended, which I'm sure I have, I'm known for that, I apologize, but I'm doing what I'm doing as the way I was raised by my father, who's been dead fifty years. I've been fighting for myself for fifty years. It's not all about me, it's all about, Stockbridge has been left out over the years. Now I'm seeing where Ola is being left out. I've been down there for almost nine years. We cannot work together as a Hampton, as a McDonough, as a Locust Grove, as a Stockbridge. Fairview should be getting their percent of the funds because they've got a lot of businesses over there. I would love to see Fairview a city. That way they couldn't say that we have a senior center and it's in Fairview. Thank you, and may you all have a blessed Christmas.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I could.
Mr. Bowman?
Comment, please, ma'am. I won't take any time, it's, I won't take much time, but recently, we've all seen the, the things going on with the city of Stockbridge. Actually, I went up and I sit through a couple of the hearings and some of the other things, but having said that, the city of Stockbridge has moved into a, a, a concern in a senior center, a course of action very similar to Locust Grove, in that they purchased a piece of property from First State Bank, sixty-four thousand square feet, I think, it's a huge building, I don't know exactly, my, my short-term memory's not that great, so, but it's a fair amount now. They, and they're calling it the same thing that we wanted to, or that you wanted to do, that we backed you on, was an abet center that would also house seniors as well as having weddings and other things that could go on there. So, you know, with all the turmoil and things that's gone on in Stockbridge, they're all moving forward to do some good things for the city, and this is just one of them. And it's going to be a youth, my understanding from Mark, it's going to be a youth, a senior, they're going to try to make it multipurpose, like the Locust Grove, which is more what we probably should strive to have, so that we can include more citizens in that mix. I thought it was important to bring that up after Ms. Eskew had made the comment that she, because she's, every, all of us that around Stockbridge that hang out around there, we know that they're buying that stuff, so, and I think that's a very good move, and I want to commend the city council for making that, that move, because it's going to help more than just one group of people.
The city of Stockbridge as well for moving forward with that, that acquisition. I think it's actually nineteen thousand square feet, and they're looking at, um, working with all the nonprofit organizations, as well as, um, using the facility for Boys and Girls Club and a senior center. So I thought, I thought it was a great move, and, you know, you know, I thought it was a good step towards moving in the right direction for a city that's had some strenuous disagreements.
That's what we've been working for, is a boys and girls center and a senior center. If we can work the two together, I know there's been animosity between Stockbridge and the county open years, animosity, hatred, whatever. We're just like North King, we've always paid a large share of taxes with very little. Now the majority of taxes is spread all over again. But Fairview is not Stockbridge. It never has been. I'm like, Warren, I can tell you exactly where Stockbridge stopped and Fairview stopped. Ask Linda Farmer, we graduated together. There is a difference, but it is a forty-five minute drive from North King to get to the Fairview Senior Center. Fairview, senior center, everything you've got over there. When my mother fell to ill health, I couldn't allow two hours.
Ms. Rutledge, we cannot hear you.
Oh.
If you can make it brief, please.
I'll be brief.
What Mr. Holmes is saying, if we can have a center that can help the youth and help the seniors, that will be great. It's a forty-five minute drive from Stockbridge to Fairview. If you're at City Hall, you can, you can allow forty-five minutes to get over to the senior center. This would be such an asset, because we have got an enormous amount of seniors in Stockbridge. And wherever it's located, Stockbridge can work with it. I just pray that the Commissioners will continue to work and help Stockbridge in any way they can with grants and funds.
Thank you. Ms. County Attorney, anything for public session?
Madam Chair, can I just say a couple of words? I just want to say to the outgoing Commissioners, it's been a pleasure working with you over the past couple of years. I've learned a lot, and I look forward to seeing you all and continuing to work with you all, you all in the future. So thank you so much for your service, and we look forward to working with you in the future as well.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. All right, Mr. County Manager, anything for public session? Upcoming meetings and events. There will not be a meeting tomorrow, December eighteenth. Thursday, December twentieth at seven PM, the inauguration ceremony for board members will be held at the admin building here in the community room. Monday, January eighth at nine AM, we have a regular board meeting. Tuesday, January fifteenth at six thirty PM is a regular board meeting. Please tell me we don't have anything for executive session.
Do not.
Hallelujah. Okay, that's our Christmas gift to the board. All right, and I know this is the last meeting of the year, and so I wanted to give each Commissioner that's outgoing an opportunity to say a few words. I'm going to let Mr. Holder speak last, being the one with the greatest amount of time on the board, and, and I just want to start off by thanking the citizens for the opportunity to serve the last eight years. It has certainly been an honor and a pleasure and a privilege for me to do so. I'm very proud of what our board has been able to accomplish. We've served in the best of times and the worst of times. We went from being the fastest-growing county and, one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation, to being in the middle four years later of the worst recession this country has ever faced. So it's like we went from the mountaintop to the, to the valley in just a few short years, and, and both of those had their own sets of challenges that I have learned a lot in the eight years as we've had to deal with those. Henry County has some of the most exceptional staff of any government bar none, and so I want to thank the staff for the opportunity to work with you and to get to know you, and our county is certainly blessed to have you as part of this organization. And certainly my board members, whom we have butted heads with a lot of times, but have always kept it very, very professional. I've enjoyed the opportunity to work with each and every one of you. I do want to ask the citizens of the community to pray for the new board that's coming in. It's easy to sit in your armchairs at home or behind your computer and criticize for the decisions that are made, but I have yet to find really anyone in an elected position here at the regional or state level that were not serving because of their care and concern for their community. Their motives were not self-serving, and sometimes we want to pass those judgments on people when, in actuality, they're just normal citizens like everybody else with families and, that go to church here and shop here, and their motives are pure and simple, they just want to serve the citizens. So pray for them. Every time you open your mouth to complain, offer up a prayer first, and that, they'll certainly appreciate it, I'm sure. And I do want to especially thank my husband, who is, should be nominated for sainthood because he has been without a wife, a cook, somebody to hang around with for the last eight years, as I have spent hours upon hours doing this job, and I could not have done it without him or without the support of my children, who are absolutely phenomenal. And I just wanted to say how much I love and appreciate them for the opportunity that they've allowed me to serve. And I want to wish the new board all the best, and I will certainly be praying for them as well as they take their roles in January to lead this county forward, and I'm looking forward to great things, and actually looking forward to a tax cut. I think we'll be getting one of those as well, from what I understand. So with that being said, Mr. Stamey, I'll look to you for some final comments.
Well, I don't really know where to start, but I can, I can tell you, it's been a pleasure to serve and represent District Three over the years. I appreciate the confidence that the citizens in District Three have put in me in the last eight years. It's Billy, it's been humbling to serve. You know, I think at the beginning, one of my aspects of District Three was to make it safer. We've hung a lot of red lights, put a lot of turning lanes in and out in District Three. We've added some roads to make some connectivity to the interstate with the Eastlake Parkway a high priority. We've built some senior centers in the county, we built, we bought some rock, wreck land to expand the parks. We've touched on a lot of things. There's a lot of great leadership in this room. It's truly been a pleasure to serve with each and every one of you. I call you friend. Michael, I enjoy to get to know you from day one. I remember meeting you the very first night meeting we had real close here when we had to deal with the church issue, and I remember the conversation me and you had afterward. Mike, Mike Bush, we've all, we've known each other for a while because our kids have gone to school together. It's been great, the leadership you provided us through the very, very, very rocky storm we've been into the last, it was supposed to be two years, but ended up going to four or five years. Latonya, you were assistant when I came on, it's been a pleasure to see you get promoted, and you're, you're driving the bus, doing a great job over there. Shade, do I call you Ms. Waffle House, or what? Do I refer to you as Ms. Shade? But it's been a pleasure to serve with you back there, you know, in the back, we've cut up, we've had a lot of great times, we've even owned a waffle house together, so we enjoy that. Julie, you made a great, great job, you're doing a great job, is putting information and making this information available to the general public out there. It's outstanding. When I go into other cities and visit other counties, and this is weird, but I'll turn on their seat, their TVs, and it's, it's all backroom stuff, I'm thinking, wow, man, we're, we're really on the, we're very comparable to some metropolitan cities as far as what we offer to the general public as far as information is concerned. In town, we've done, we've done a lot together this, these last eight years, we've paved a lot of roads, we've improved a lot of, a lot of the roads. I'm, I'm excited that you're going to be here, and we've finalized our list for the next, next year to resurface some roads in District Three, and Gary will be a big part of that. Thank you for your leadership you provided over there. And probably the hardest-working man in this entire building over there is Mr. Fred, he won't raise his head, but it's been a pleasure to serve with you. I want you to lead by example. And I've told you this before, I'm reading a book on leadership, and man, if that book is not you, I don't know who is. It's just, you've taken each individual person in this room and tried to build up on their strengths, trying more crafting than something they're not. You've tried to build on their abilities, and that book, that book is you. I've got to get you example, I've got to get you a copy of the book. I know, I said that before, but I will. Todd back there running the HR, I have great confidence in your ability to, to run that department. You were always an ace to do it, I thought that. Bert, we disagree on schools, but I'm glad that you, that you, I know you're a big dog fan deep down inside, I'm excited that you're running the bill department. I think your department will truly grow over the next coming years. Keith, great leadership you provide over there in the PD, I'm excited that you'll still be there. Burch, you're a natural in that, in the Stormwater Department. Sherri, you're hiding over there, but it's always been a pleasure for meeting you from day one. I know your heart, I know you really care about what goes on in this county, you care about the rezonings. It's been a pleasure to serve. I look on this end, there's a lot of wisdom. Reed, you're such a fighter, there's not a doubt in my mind, you're going to be just fine in, on the new board. Mr. Holder, we've cut up a good bit over the last couple of years. I appreciate your pound cake, I know I'm going on and on, but I'll miss that part, but I will miss the wisdom that y'all two have definitely brought to the table. I've learned a lot, a lot from y'all, a lot of life lessons from y'all, and I'll, I'll probably be checking in with you. Reed, I will definitely be praying for you, your continued guidance, because you'll be a senior member on this board, so, and I, I know they'll welcome your wisdom and your leadership on the new board. BJ, it's been a pleasure, we come in together. I remember walking the halls at, at University of Georgia when we're going through training and wondering what we really got ourselves into. But I've watched your heart, and I've watched you lead through some very tough times, make some very tough decisions, and we go, wow, we've all said that, you've made those decisions. I know you're going to be just fine in the future, and I welcome, I'm sure I'll be seeing you again on a regular basis. Brian, your, your time, it was perfect, we needed you at the time, but I know we clashed a little bit on some situations, but your time and, that your leadership that you brought as far as the numbers, guys, is going to be very much welcomed in the coming future because we're not out of this storm. And Bruce, I've got to know you real well the last couple of years, I know your heart is for people, and I've watched you lead as far as bringing jobs to this county, you're doing that, and I really admire you. If I can ever provide any support for you on the outside, even though I'm going away, I'm not going to be gone because we're going to stay involved in the county. We love this county. You're doing that and I really admire you. If I can ever provide any support for you on the outside, even though I'm going away, I'm not going to be gone because we're going to stay involved in the county. We love this county. And the last thing I want to touch on, Ms. Jane, you touched on a great thing as far as forgiveness. You came up here and offered a forgiveness to us because some things that got said during the campaign season. And there was a lot of stuff that got spread in this county that was not true. And I love the commercial State Farm has on there. You talk about it because it's on the internet, it's got to be true. You know, what a humongous whatever it is. But there's been a lot of stuff said and I want to apologize for any of that stuff that got out there and if it got out in the wrong way, I apologize. But more than anything, I want to offer my forgiveness to the new board that's coming in and some of the people who's made the allegations against us, which was totally false. I was coming back from the University of Georgia back in August or end of August and I heard a song and that song has always clung to me. And it applies to these basic principles that we lead from in this county. And I hope this new board takes that song and makes it an anthem for them to live by because it's called by Matthew West. And I try to challenge everybody in here to listen to that song, Matthew West. The name of the song is called Forgiveness. There's people who's done damage to you that'll never, ever offer you forgiveness. But we're commanding to forgive. And what a great time of the year to forgive during the season when the biggest gift was given to us undeservedly. But I just want to thank, thank you. Y'all, I see you every weekend here. I could go on and on, but I will save some for the afternoon. But thanks again for allowing me to serve with each and every one of y'all.
With all that's been said, there's not much left for me to say. No, I really, I agree with every comment that's been made. I'm just going to go back a little further. To bring things into perspective, yes, I have been around a long time and I have to thank the people of District One, for lack of a better term, but for the southeastern part of Henry County that have had confidence in me for the last forty years, the last sixteen of which were right here as your commissioner. To bring things more into perspective, I've only missed one meeting in this building. I was here before, as a commissioner, before this building was built. And since this one, when was it, ninety-nine or two thousand, nineteen ninety and a half, I've missed one meeting in sixteen years and that was due to my wife having surgery. And I think that's excusable. But seeing the, I've served with every chairman, every countywide elected chairman except for Bill Gardner. And I counted it up one time, twenty-some-odd commissioners over the years. And believe me, everybody brings a different flavor to the table. This board right now has not agreed on everything. But that's the strength of a board, is to be able to disagree and to move on. And I know Tommy is sitting out there and Tommy, you will be the leader of this board. I don't have to tell you anything, you were mayor for a long time too. But it's good to be able to disagree. But it's also good not to try to destroy one another. And ladies and gentlemen, that has existed during my tenure here in this building. We have had boards here that just were not just to disagree. They wanted to be disagreeable and they would destroy you if you, so let it be. But I have enjoyed it and I do appreciate the people allowing me to do it. I appreciate my family and the commitment. If a young guy or a young girl wants to get into public life, you make it all right at home first because if you don't, you won't ever make it. It takes the support of your family. In looking back, just think about how many, with everybody sitting around this table today or this bench, how many events that you didn't get to go to that were your child's or your grandchild's or your wife's or your husband's? How much time do you lose? These are things that the average person that's sitting out in the public, and I'm going to call many of them an uninformed electorate, that are ready to criticize and condemn every move that a board makes, don't realize what the commitment is to hold public office. If you've never done it and desire it, you should do it. But I would encourage everybody to do it, but don't be so quick to criticize and condemn. There's normally a reason that a board does something. I do appreciate the staff, have for many years. And I guess one of the most hurtful things is the fact that during this election cycle, there were many of our employees that did not support this sitting board of commissioners because of different issues, raises, different things. That's understandable because that's a person's right to do what they want to do. But I only ask once again that the people will start to not be so quick to criticize and condemn. See why these things are done. See where your comparisons are. Even though it may not be, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting about Bob White, we may not be where we need to be as far as economic development is concerned. But go back the forty years I'm talking about, go back the sixteen years I'm talking about and compare what we had then, what we have now and say, are we better now than we were? Economy, no, we're in terrible shape. But those are, the world economy is just that. It's the world. That is out of our control and we have to control and make adjustments the best we can to accommodate the bad conditions. And again, in closing, I certainly have enjoyed it. I've enjoyed serving with these. I've had people come to me and say, well, what do you think of B.J. as a chairman? And I said, well, let me say this. My hat's off to her because she broke the ice, she's the first woman. The second thing is, I have served with many that are worse chairman than B.J. Matthews. B.J. Matthews is not the worst chairman I've ever served with, I'm telling you that. I've enjoyed serving with everybody on the board. And every time there's a change, you feel that. And every time a new board's coming on, they're going to find fault that the other one did. When the next one comes, when this new one comes on, they're going to find faults. That's the way it is. That's life. Because you have an opportunity to pick and you're able to see and figure out why somebody did something and why it was wrong. But I've enjoyed it and just want to say thank you for the support that this board has given me over the years. And we're going to miss it, I think. I think I am, I don't know for sure, but it will be different. And again, the new board coming in, I want to know that they have my full support. And because after all, if we're in it for the right reason, we're here to represent the people of this county. And if we want to take our toys and go home, that's not the right attitude. We're here to support the new board. I am, and I think that I'm speaking for the rest of the board. We need to do that. And as Randy said, remember the season, but don't let it just be the season. That needs to be remembered every day, twenty-four-seven. And with that, Madam Chair, I am finished.
Mr. Bowman?
I'd like to make a few comments and I'll start with Randy. I told Randy shortly after I was elected that I felt like he was, after being around him for a little while, that he was a leader. He was, he looked at areas sometimes that, not sometimes, but more than once, that I didn't look at. Changed my mind more than once after hearing your side of it, you know? When you're kind of sixty-five years old and you think you done been about everywhere, sometimes you get to thinking a little too highly of yourself and you think you know more than you do. But Randy was, has been there and made, helped me in more ways than he'll ever know. Helped me in looking at different sides to different issues going on. And, you know, we hadn't always agreed with each other. As a matter of fact, I probably disagreed with everybody on this board more than once. I think I made three motions and didn't get a second. So, that ought to tell you something in the same day. But anyway, you know, just your friendship, just your knowledge and integrity that you've shown me, you know, it's just been, it's been great. And I'm going to miss you guys. I've been told that I need to probably be, go back to my kinder and gentler self and then I've been told that I shouldn't. So, we'll figure how that's going to work out. With B.J. and I, we butted heads on a number of occasions. But we weren't, we agreed to disagree and, you know, we worked those things out. And I think that a lot of times, things are about compromise. And when I say compromise, that brings up a bad word to a lot of people, but it's not. It's looking at your side and looking at my side and then looking at one other side, you know, and trying to say, okay, you know, as long as you're not compromising your morals or doing anything illegal, you know, that's what government's all about. Because if we ever get to the point where we can't, then we'll be dysfunctional. We won't be able to do anything. And I think B.J.'s led the charge on a lot of issues. I know from getting the mailouts, there was a lot of things I thought that were totally uncalled for. And I disagreed with a lot of that, or not a lot of it. I disagreed with just about, because I kind of got some from everybody. Just future reference, I did make some copies of some of those because it'll be interesting to see how we are going to make some things work because of some of the things that were said during the campaign about how we're going to go to a revenue-based budget. I want to see how that's going to work. Of course, I can't see how it's going to, but we'll find out. That'll work out. But I appreciate, you know, when you give this much time, I've only given six years, but it's true, I've missed a lot of things. And when your daughters say, we can't go on vacation next week, we've got to work around daddy's schedule at the county. Not my business, it tends to do a lot more, but we got to work around daddy's county schedule because he won't miss it. So, when those things happen. Then of course with Warren, Warren is a historian and I don't mean that. I'm not joking about that. I know we laugh a lot. But Warren has taught me more about what it means to be a servant and to vote your convictions, whether or not they're popular or not, doesn't matter. I mean, you vote your convictions and looking after, not just your district. Because I don't believe that that's, Warren is a county servant, just like we all are. Because all of our decisions have a direct effect on the county, not just our districts. But Warren has been such a pleasure and I'm going to miss you. And, you know, me and you, we, they go back and look at the record. People, I've heard people say, well, I read Warren's joint, that he'd go back and look at some of the votes. We have, we don't, yeah, we can get as far away. But when we leave this building, that vote's over. That vote's over. Warren's still my friend. He'll be my friend. And I respect his commitment and I respect his opinion. I may disagree with it, but I respect it. I respect Bruce's and I respect Brian's also, but we're talking about these three guys now. And I don't really need to hold everybody up. I know we've got people here, things going on. But I just, I feel blessed to have had this opportunity to have worked with you guys and lady and to have those opportunities. And also to know that for seven months now, I've been fighting, you know, a pretty tough foe who sometimes gets the better of me. And I know you guys have prayed for me and had my back and I'll never forget that. I'll never forget it long as I live. Because, you know, when you, like I said, when you're sixty-five years old, you kind of think you pretty well know a whole lot of everything. When the truth is, you learn something every day. And I look forward to us moving forward, moving this county forward and us doing whatever we got to do to make it work. And I just thank y'all for the service. I know, I just served that six years and I know what it is. And y'all, y'all done the eight, of course. I don't even know how, my short-term memory's not that good. But I know you were on the school board, I know you were on city council and I know you've been here for a while. And I know you're, you know, that's leading with your heart. And I just, I mean, I've admired you for an awfully long time and will continue to. And thank y'all for your service, really.
Mr. Preston?
I won't take a ton of time, but it's interesting to me because I got on the school board the same time you two guys were elected and then Warren would come back to you. I always enjoyed, I know I've only been on the Board of Commissioners for eleven months, but you guys were always open. Some of my favorite memories was when we had joint meetings with the Board of Commission and the Board of Education and we got to break bread, you know, and kind of talk about what was going on with the county. And I still remember sitting in this back room with B.J. and then Randy, you were there too, when we talking about the cost of educating one child. And those things, you guys were the first, you know, I felt like the commission kind of came on and understood the plight of education and other things. And you guys were a big part of that and I really have enjoyed working with you. And I know we haven't agreed on everything, but you guys, as soon as we got through the votes, I never felt, you know, any different. Our friendship was still there. Warren, you coming from the Board of Education, I don't know if we've ever gotten to talk about it, but you were awesome because sometimes it's easy with, the biggest way you spend money is on education. For commissioners and Board of Education to kind of butt heads. And you having that experience of a Board of Education member was always so valuable, I felt like for the county, because you came with a different perspective. And I always thought it was incredible how you were able to share your insight. Very good, that pound cake truly is incredible. I think it cracked a lot of walls. You can't be mad at somebody when they show up with such good eating like that. But I hope that I get to fill in your shoes on representing the Board of Education on the Board of Commissioners. But I just wanted you to know, because I don't think I ever shared it with you, how much I was appreciated when I was on the other side of things. And I think that it's, everything in politics is a lot more gray than we all realize. There's usually variables and other things that are playing into it. And I've thoroughly enjoyed working with all you guys. And it's been hard but fun at the same time. I can't think of how many times we've had meetings where you get upset, but then you laugh in the same meeting. And that's kind of what you guys have offered and we're going to miss you, we truly are.
Thank you, Mr. Preston. All right, before I ask for a motion to adjourn, because hallelujah, we're not having an executive session, I did want to offer a benediction. And I know that's different than what we typically do, but what are you going to do, fire me?
B.J., let's remember those folks in Connecticut in this benediction too.
Absolutely, absolutely. Father, we give thanks to you for this day, for the abundance of your blessings. And first and foremost, Lord, we do want to lift up the families in Connecticut that have suffered this loss. We ask you, Father, that you would undergird them with your hand, with your strength, Lord. Wrap yourself around them, Lord, and help them through these difficult days to come. Lord, we know that there's really no explanation, there's no words that can ease the pain of their suffering, God, but I pray that they'll turn their hearts and their minds toward you. And Father, we do, of course, want to offer forgiveness, first of all, to those who have harmed us in any way whatsoever, Father, to let them see the love of Christ shine through us as we extend forgiveness to them for the way that you have extended your forgiveness to us. And Father, we do pray for wisdom and knowledge for the incoming board. I pray, Father, that you would grant them the abilities to make the correct decisions for the citizens of this county. And I pray, Father, that you would give them the same unity that this board has experienced over the years. And Father, we want to pray for the citizens of Henry County. I pray that you would bless this county- I pray that you would bless this County and bless our people, Father, and help us, Lord, to show kindness to one another. And we ask, Lord, that you would bless our nation and our President and our Congress and Senators, they make decisions, Lord, that are going to affect us in a great way in the weeks and the months to come. But Father, in all things, be glorified. And we are so very thankful for Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, whose birth we celebrate during this time of year, Father, but let Him live, rule and reign in our hearts all year long, Father. And let us always give you praise and honor and glory for the things that you do and for who you are. And we ask these things in Christ's name. Amen. If there's no further business to come before this Board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Holder, oh, let me, in a second by Mr. Stamey. Y'all in favor? Motion carries 5-0. We stand adjourned.